First is the adjustments to the agenda. Before, we're gonna move nine A.
Right?
Yes. So I'll let you, I'll let you go for that.
Oh, sure.
If you wanna.
So it's quite a list, but I have an amended agenda so folks can follow along. We are removing nine B, water rate analysis. We are moving action items nine A, nine C, and nine D to the consent agenda. We are swapping the order of new business and unfinished business. So I have a.
Completely?
Yeah, so we'll, yes.
So we're finishing with unfinished business?
We're finishing.
That is correct.
Finished business, yes.
Yes.
So here's the revised, so you can follow along and you can have the page number for the packet, where the packing materials are for the items.
Thank you. That's great.
Any additional adjustments?
Here, we got an extra here.
I will take that as a no. So we'll move on to visitors and communications. Ron Tomlin?
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure.
The Veterans Council of our, for our great city of Berry. It gives me great pleasure tonight to have a moment, if we could, to digress a little bit about what we're up here for tonight.
Absolutely.
I would ask if I could have the chief for the fire department and his assistant, along with Chuck Barney, come up and present a flag to the city. So fifteen by twenty-five, brand new, flag nylon to fly over the city during any of the preparations that we do. So if you would please. We raise a fair amount of money to be able to appropriate this flag to the community. All of it was done by donations and we raised extra money for a second flag to be available. So we have that appropriations for that and we'd like to have you have responsibility to make sure this flag flies, whatever our city wishes to and where it flies at the times and places. Thank you. On behalf of the city. Council will take care of it. For taking care of it. And we've had a lot of fun chasing down a poet finances and Rob Stratton was extremely instrumental in doing that during our services out here in the city. And but now we're on a new part of the agenda of what we'd like to do in this community and I'm gonna ask the request, we'd like to be able to fly this nine eleven flag for this American flag to be on nine eleven. It's a, it's an agenda that I believe that we have seen in many people that have passed in the community, but not here, but in our New York DC, but also all the people who file patriots that died for this country, it should be flying. I see.
So we can take that up under.
I would ask you to be a motion if you can make that happen and you guys can have the diligence of having to decide on how you wish to do that. I believe our community, after talking to a lot of folks out in their community, that we belong, this flag belongs to the community, not just this council, belongs to the community. And we're asking that flag to be there to remind everybody that nine eleven happened to everybody. It affected everybody in this country. So I don't think that they should be put away. And then on behalf of our Veterans Council, we'd like to make sure that behalf of American Legion Post ten, BFW Post seven ninety, and the Rock City Area fifteen thirty-five outs were very instrumental in making all this happen. And they are very much in favor of this flag flying in this community. And we have been in this community over fifty years. I've worked with his council. Over the years, I've seen all the different faces come through here and worked with them. And all I can say is the praise that we got was because we were able to do all the things that the council didn't have time to do or the city didn't have time to do to put the flags on Main Street. And to see that they were well cared for. So please take that in consideration when you make your decision on whether you're gonna fly this flag. Okay? So we'll. Amendment, and I understand that it can be controversial. I'm not here to make it a big discussion, but I'm here to say that it belongs to everybody in this community.
Not with you sitting here, Ron. Not at all.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion. I realize that it's not on the agenda, so we can ratify it next week.
We could add it into the nine eleven tribute if you would like.
That's, that's.
So the next, the, the next agenda item, well, after the consent agenda and when we talk about the nine eleven tribute, we can add that right into, in addition to what we're already doing for the nine eleven.
Thank you.
All right.
To have our veterans that serve this country.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Yes.
Ron, I just wanted to say it, it does make a difference to me. I had presented a motion to the council saying the plot, the flag would fly on Memorial Day, on Independence Day, and on Veterans Day. And we would stop there. But like I said just a moment ago, you've never been here asking. The Veterans Council has never been here asking. And I'll never say no to you, Ron. You know, we see the flags, we see the stuff you can see. But I worked with you for over a decade, continue to work with you. And what people don't see is the work that all of you do in the background. When a veteran is in crisis, when a veteran's family is in crisis, when they're in need, yeah, you guys step up. So, yeah. You sent the right guy. I'll never say no to Ron Tomlin. Ron, you are a special guy.
You are. Thank you very much, Mayor.
And so I just wanna say thank you, thank you to you, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a great opportunity to represent those. Every one of these comrades have served their country and they've seen what Black City does. That flag flies.
Yeah, and I, and I in no way mean to diminish the service of all of you. You just have a long way to go until you. I mean, let's be real. So you know, you're running a distant second, but, but you're getting there and, and thank you to all of you as well.
Okay, can I say something about? So Saturday morning, eight o'clock, if anybody's interested in climbing the ladder, we'll be down fixing whatever flags need to be fixed. If you're interested in climbing the ladder, come to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors and communications? Steve Whitaker?
Good evening. I'm calling to your attention and I'm hoping it's already to your attention, a public records request that was made on April twenty-second. It was subsequently appealed to the head of the agency. Numerous assurances from Steve McKenzie, we will take care of this. We're having trouble with cooperation. Apparently some, probably some of your employees were refusing to produce the records and they were trying to get the IT people to have to go get the passwords to get into the state of Vermont.gov accounts in order to produce the responses. These records have to do with the critical public safety regional dispatch planning that has been going on and, and/or their lack thereof. There's been representations made in the legislative arena by some of your staff that were less than accurate. And we have a real need for oversight and scrutiny of what kind of planning and who's counting on what kind of revenue from this regionalization. There's potentially six and a half million in grants that are proposals are due Friday. I suspect Barry's putting into proposal in cooperation with Montpelier, in cooperation with Central, no, not Central, Capital Fire Mutual A. The fact that your employees have obstructed production of necessary public records in order to find the truth. That's what public records is for. And y'all have taken an oath to uphold the law and you're not upholding the law. Right? This, this is, it's a personnel matter. I believe you need to go into, you take advantage of one of your executive sessions, call the relevant people in and deal with a personnel matter that's obstructing public records access. But I know that Mal has, you know, working on regional public safety from a narrow little sideline light of CBPSA. But much work has gone on and I'm working really hard, have been for years on it. And I'm absolutely frustrated that an appeal to the head of the agency has been ignored since the original request in April. So I'd like y'all to take some action on this, not just start over, yeah, I don't know anything about it. You know, McKenzie knew about it, your mayor knows about it. There's no excuse for this. This is, this is not what, this is not upholding your oath, you know?
So I'll just tell you, I don't know what the public records request is. So I'm not sure if you're referring to me as the mayor. I'm just the, the person that's sitting in for the mayor at this moment in time. What my recommendation is that you reach out to, to our new city manager, Nicholas Starelli Castro, and have a conversation with him and he will have a conversation with you. And you know, I'm sure this council likes the idea of Freedom of Information Act, you know, giving out information. And I don't know, I, I don't know what the reasons were. I, I can't tell you what response you got.
Are you suggesting that you've lost a pending records request that is actually ripe for Superior Court? You've lost it in the handoff between city managers?
I am not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is that what I would recommend doing is reaching out to Nicholas Starelli Castro, our current city manager. And.
Yeah, we shook hands earlier. Since you asked, I'll tell you what this is. Records, emails, et cetera. Town with city council, city manager, town of Berlin officials, public safety personnel, including Oldsworth.
Sure.
And Oldsworth's emails with Capital Fire Mutual Aid officials created or acquired during the last eight months related to referencing plans or strategies for improving or upgrading the Berry City dispatch operations, including but not limited to consideration entering new contracts or agreements for dispatching for the town of Berlin, projected revenue from the state of Vermont on behalf of Berlin or other municipalities and services.
Sure.
Compensation such as equipment, personnel, contract, purchasing contract discounts, potential impacts on staffing costs, potential impacts on response times or dispatch service quality to existing customers. These are fundamental public safety issues. If your staff is leading you down a road of diluting the service that people are paying for right now, Capital Fire is in a contract, MOU, an agreement with Montpelier, and all these towns in the Capital Fire District expect a level of service. And if we're gonna dilute that level of service without their consent or awareness, that's not safe.
So what I would say is reach out to Nicholas Starelli Castro, our new manager. And if you don't mind, could you just report back to us next council meeting? I don't know if we're having a council meeting next week. And if there's some sort of reason that we can't have that come out, then we can have an executive session then to discuss it. If there's a problem, we can, I don't know if we could have an executive session for determining whether or not public records can come out. So I, I don't know.
That's absolutely fine.
But I'm sure the, the mayor Hemmerich would be able to handle that.
So he'll be back next week.
I do not know when.
I believe we're planning to meet the thirteenth will be our next meeting.
Okay.
So we will, we will plan to have.
But you get my point that this.
So I understand, like, I'm, I, yes.
Does the manager have a copy of the public records request?
I don't believe I do.
And would you mind, and I apologize.
Yeah.
But would you mind sending it to the manager?
I've already sent it to the mayor multiple times.
The manager, I said, would you mind sending it to the manager, this manager? When you leave this evening?
Right.
So that he has a copy of it. Which was what I just told me, he does not, he does not believe he has a copy of that public records request. I'm not trying to make excuses. I'm trying to achieve progress.
I know, but I've already appealed to the mayor after I've appealed to the head of the agency and I've sent.
I understand that.
All right. All right.
I understand that.
Is a poll.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other visitors and communications? Seeing none, we're moving on. All right, so approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and Ms. Clerk Dawes?
Just a couple things. One, the first quarter property taxes are due by September fifteenth. So a reminder to those who get property tax bills. Secondly, water and sewer bills are going in the mail tomorrow and are due by the end of September. So you should be seeing them in the mail the early part of next week. And third, you may have heard or read notices from the Secretary of State's office asking people to confirm their voter registration and mailing addresses. The Secretary of State's office, as per the recent changes in law, will be sending ballots to all active voters for the November election based on the mailing addresses that are in the voter checklist. And they are actually going to be pulling that list the end of this week. So we have been working with voters all week and last week too, on making sure that we have the corrected mailing addresses on file. This includes not only your mailing address here, but if you know that you're going to be away, say from the second week of October on, we can put in a mailing address for, for, you know, we've gotten snowbird mailing addresses, so we can make sure that we're getting them mailed to the right place. You can either call our office and we can get those updated or you can go online to my voter page, which is mvp.vermont spelled out dot gov. And you can check your mailing address that's on file. So feel free to get in touch with us or, or go online and confirm your mailing address. Thank you.
All right, and on to.
Question.
Yes.
People that have changed their addresses, no issues with, like, there'll be no issue with someone just, would there be an issue with someone not answering that?
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't need, um, where it's not dependent upon someone going online or calling us to confirm. It's just an opportunity to, if you, if you have moved, you definitely should check. Particularly if you've moved from one community to the other, in which case you have to register in your new community. If you've received, we did a mailing, the city of Berry did a mailing back in January. We sent postcards to everybody encouraging them to sign up to receive absentee ballots. If you knew you got that postcard, we've obviously got your mailing address correct. So you don't need to worry about it. If you think there are any concerns, that would be my recommendation to check. The other thing is if you live in an apartment or a condominium and so you've got like a unit number, it's a good idea to check to make sure that we have the right one on file because we have found that, that the post office is very particular about making sure they have unit or apartment numbers on items being mailed.
All right, any other questions? All right, liquor control?
Yep, we've got two items under liquor control. We have a, a request to cater application from Cornerstone. This is for an event at the Opera House on September seventh. From seven thirty, five thirty to seven thirty, this is their second century gala that all of you got an invitation to. So that requires council approval.
Zoom, all right, in second. All right, discussion? Am I allowed to preside over this if I'm planning on abstaining? Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? An abstention?
Yeah. And then the other one is from the Elks Club. The Elks Club has had an outside consumption permit for a few years, which has been in the alleyway between their building and L Brown Printing. And they are seeking to expand that to include the rest of their parking lot area. It has been run by the police chief who has signed off on it, so it now needs approval from the council.
Motion?
So moved.
Second, okay, all the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
That's it.
All right. Moving on to city managers' report.
Thank you. So counselors, you have the department head reports in your packet. I would just add, this past week, we've kicked off our budget process with the department heads. My first budget process here in the city, so going very thorough process, line by line, with every department head, very, you know, detailed, nitty gritty in the weeds, spending a lot of time with them. Have to reschedule subsequent sessions with some of the departments, just that's the level of detail we're going into. So thank you to Dawn, who's been sitting through all of those and to the department heads who are going through those, those meetings as well. So that's been a big focus this week. Couple more departments coming up and all in, and getting ready to present a first budget to you later this fall. We are moving into what I would call phase two of our capital improvement plan. As you may know, we had Grant Gager out here in July to go through capital projects with all our department heads. He's taken back all he heard from the department heads and he's now given us a draft plan to review, react to. Also in line for something to come back to the council for review later this fall. Last week, we closed, closed the pool for the season on the twenty-first. Great season. We're still crunching numbers, but anecdotally, we think we did really well on attendance. We think we reached some new residents. Really got some good use of it on a couple of days. We opened it up for free due to heat advisory. So overall, with the, this, with the new improvements to it, we think we had a really great first season there. And then just a couple of personnel updates. I know we've, we hear a lot and talk a lot about some of our staffing challenges, but this week, in the last couple of weeks, we, we had a couple of new folks start. One of them is a new meter specialist, started last week, Michael Smith, one of your former colleagues.
Really?
And, and I have a new executive assistant, which is Roxanne Pike, who will be with us at our next meeting, so you can meet her. But we're all very happy to have Roxanne. She's already being a big help around the office, came to us from BLCT. So really glad to start building up some capacity and, and easing up some of the workload for existing staff, so.
Nice. Carol must be happy about Michael Smith.
Always nice to have Michael around.
He's great. Do you think he'll not put, give me a ticket?
Well, he's, though, he's doing water meters.
Oh, water meters, I miss that, my bad. I'm sorry, I'm still gonna get taken.
Still ticket you.
She will, she is not biased. Thank you, that's great, that's great news. All right, with that, we're, uh, any questions for the manager? No, uh, on to new business and nine E discussion and approval of nine eleven tribute at the fire department. And we will have Chief Brent, come on up, come on down, right? I said it wrong.
Good enough.
Good evening. Doug Brent, Fire Chief for the City of Barry. Just a quick recap, um, we, uh, last year, uh, during nine eleven. Really during nine eleven, on nine eleven, I took a phone call at home from Counselor Booton. Um, talking to me about nine eleven and how important he thought it was to celebrate it here in the city. And that there'd been some issues at a, the previous city council meeting, so that he didn't get to raise that as a. Uh, wanting to make sure to thank the first responders in our community for everything that they did. And then this year I was contacted by Michael to remind me of that and, uh, Counselor Stockwell as well, and we've gotten together and. Thought up some good ideas. I explained to them how we had, um. Used the flag that was sewn by the members of the community on the apparatus floor. We, we pulled the fire trucks out and we hang it from one of the beams on the ceiling. And it's great because when that was made, people signed it on both sides. So the way we display it on the floor. People can walk all the way around it and they can see where their relatives signed it and what they'd sewn on there, uh, in years past. And we're very proud of the fact that one of the initiators of that whole project, when that happened years ago, was Jim Ward, and Jim is one of our. Um, firefighter call men, and he's also on the CVPSA board for, for Barry City, so. It kind of came full circle and, um, Counselor Stockwell and Counselor Booton. And myself have, um, kind of worked to get things in, in line to do that again this year. Uh, as well as some other things that I'm sure that Counselor Booton is gonna add here for us, so.
Yeah, so I know that, um, Counselor Stockwell and I, we worked on a pamphlet. Um, a little card that will have, um, some information about nine eleven. I, I'm putting you on the spot. Do you happen to have the, the wording with you?
Yes, please.
Oh, you, you mean for the screen?
Oh, yeah, you can do that too, but.
Not what I meant.
Want to read that?
So because I teach college, I know that many people don't know what happened on nine eleven, especially if they're born after oh one. So one side of the card is the fireman's prayer, and the other side is just what happened. So it just says, you know, essentially, there are four planes were hijacked by terrorists linked to Al Qaeda. This is what happened. And, um, then it discusses the sacrifice made. Do people want to hear it? What happened on nine eleven oh one? On September 11th, 2001, four US planes were hijacked by terrorists linked to Al Qaeda. Two planes flew into the twin towers in New York City. A third plane flew into the Pentagon, striking the West Side. The fourth plane didn't reach its target because the passengers overwhelmed the terrorists. That plane crashed, killing everyone onboard. The passengers knowingly sacrificed themselves to save the country from greater damage. At the time of their construction, the twin towers of the World Trade Center were the tallest buildings in the world. The towers are full of people working, eating and visiting. Because it's what firefighters do, they responded to the attacks, along with police and other emergency personnel. In no other incident in American history have so many firefighters and police died during a single event. Civilians died as the fire, as the tow- towers collapsed and firefighters were there trying to save them. Firefighters and all responders had prolonged exposure to toxic fumes from the fires, resulting in disability and more early deaths. Because of this event, America changed. Thousands died or were disabled that day. And in the coming conflicts, hundreds of thousands would find their lives altered. So that's the information side, just so that people understand what happened.
And just some additional information, I know that there was three hundred, I think it was three hundred and forty-two firefighters that. Three forty-three, that was wrong, and. Um, was it thirty-two police officers and twenty-seven port authority?
I believe so, but I don't know those numbers, like I know the firefighter.
Almost, almost three thousand people lost their lives. So that will be there, uh, at the fire department, um, along with the flag hanging, uh, by itself in the fire station. And are we gonna have the fire truck? We're not gonna have that, correct?
I would like to think so, but I'm not really encouraged about it. I talked, we sent a man to the plant yesterday. And, um, it looks like it's gonna be there another ten days anyways. That's really pushing it. Right up to the last minute, so. I would hate to promise it and not be able to produce it, so if it shows, we'll have it up at the end of the street. Where it meets North Main Street like we have in the past, but I'm, I'm not really anxious, uh, think it's going to happen.
Would, uh, would you want like a cherry picker there?
I'm not sure, probably would hold that same.
It, it wouldn't, but yeah, okay. Okay, so the, the question that we have tonight is approving the, the tribute. Um, the Veterans Council has asked that we add on to that the flag on Main Street. Um, and it's up to council to make the decision.
So moved.
And just for clarity, that includes the flag on Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and could I just clarify, are we proposing to fly it on specific dates?
Well, we can work up to the Veterans Council and the manager.
Let's go.
We'll talk, run.
All right. And any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes? All right. Yeah, thank you. We appreciate everything that you guys do. Um, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to, you can run away. Thank you. All right, so, uh, new business. Item nine F P D FD vehicle replacement update and amendment. Chief Vale.
Since you couldn't say no to Ron, should we have kept him in the room?
Should have had him ask instead.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Motion to approve?
It was a very thorough report, and as I understand it, uh, there were two bidders on the vehicles.
Correct.
And, uh, council chose, uh, council, uh, manager's recommendation at that time. I don't believe you were on board yet, sir.
This was my, that was my first meeting.
First meeting?
Yes.
So as I recall, it was the manager's recommendation, uh, and your recommendation and. The other chief's recommendation that council approved low bid. Uh, as I understand it, those vehicles are not available to, to supply chain issues, so. Um, is that still your recommendation, sir?
That is still my recommendation, we.
Well, my motion.
Is there a second?
I, no, I have a question.
Well, we can do the discussion.
Yeah, is there?
I'll give you a second.
Okay, so discussion?
In our, in my recent tour of the police station, which, thank you for doing that, I noticed that there, we agreed, there are many things that need to be done. So I'm wondering if. If, if it would be better not to get that car, but to use some of that money to do some of the changes that need to happen to make the. Police station a safer, a more. A better environment.
So we, we have recognized things that need upgrading at the police station, and thank you for, for coming and allowing me to show you those. And working with Grant and, and the manager through the, the CIP process, we have. Um, a procedure that we're gonna follow to put those things into place. Um, under, under the CIP plan.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah, and, and I would just add that, um, we've worked with Clerk Dawes and Finance Division. We've, we think we've identified a source of funding for this balance that is not gonna. Take away from the capital fund. We think there's some unspent bond that would fit the spending for this, so we, we feel comfortable that this overage will, will not impact our, our capital planning.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Mr. Roszek?
Was it, um. It may have been, was it one or two vehicles that got bumped up, or was it just a general? It was a bidding between.
So from, from Formula Nissan, um, what happened was they advised me after, after the council had approved. Uh, us going with them, that, uh, the manufacturer Nissan Motor Company had ceased. Production of twenty twenty-two vehicles and that they would not offer us the rebates on the twenty-three vehicles. And as, as hard as they tried, um, to Formula Nissan's credit, um, they couldn't, they couldn't sway the, the manufacturer. So we were kind of struggling and they, they can't, uh, determine when any of those vehicles would come in, but they would still be at much higher cost. Any additional comments or questions?
You know, only that, you know, in my consideration, as I read the packet, I looked back through my old notes. And we do count, uh, city does have the funds within its current capital funds to cover. You know, the increased, uh, you know, I'm not unmindful of the increased costs, we're just. It's one of those things, and we do have the funds within our existing capital plan to address the increased costs. And thank you for your comment about the, the counselor, about the, um. Uh, improvements, but I did also note that those improvements are within the current capital improvement plans, uh, that they're currently planning. So without remake my motion, do we have a second?
We do have a second. Um, all right, so all those in favor, or is there any other questions, comments? No, okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Uh, motion passes. Thank you. All right, unfinished business. The person's not passed, we're just dealing with unfinished business, which isn't, isn't like. I'm not gonna, it bugs me every time I see it, it's like unfinished business. That's what you say to someone that's gone beyond and they're still hanging.
Been watching too many mob movies, Counselor.
Point of order, Counselor.
Sorry, sorry, yes. I'll get back on track. Uh, update on DPW facility presenter Brad Prescott. Benwell Architects and Manager Starelli Castro, Director Aghorn. Come on down. I said it right this time.
You're having too much fun with this.
I am. Be prepared.
No, 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 now I'm destroying your presentation.
Would never leave my ward two seat. Lose like a lot of power becoming mayor, just saying. True, just a facilitator. Can't even make motions. We'll let you go. That's fine. I also accept a supreme translator.
Brian Lane Parness, uh, from the Wolf Engineering Room, um, contributed to the, uh, the process substantial site.
Give me a next or a point or something when you want me to move on.
No, I, well, I, I, uh, just want to say that this was, um, I know the importance of this, I know the council's heard about the need for this. Um, you know, this was, um, at my visit here in May, this was the, the facility I toured. And so I, I saw for myself the need for this. I've been working, you know, speaking with Bill about this almost since I got here. Uh, and had a couple of good conversations with Brad and Brian, appreciate their work and, um, think they have some, you know, some good information for us and some next steps.
Um, as I, I met all of you before, but again, I'm Brad Prescott from Benwell Architects for those listening in. Um, and it was our pleasure to meet with you and present our progress back in May, and that's, that's what I'm here to do again today. Um, I might have made this quip my last presentation, but I have been told that I, I will be rewarded for my brevity, so. We're gonna try to go quick, and, uh, we're gonna have some time at the end for, for questions. Um, but if you really can't wait, please chime in. Um, this is a team effort and therefore, you know, a team presentation, so we're gonna share the mic and go back and forth. But if you could go to the next slide, uh, we'd like to do a little bit of an overview of, you know, what our goals were, where, where. We've come from so far and give you a, sort of a quick, uh, briefing of some of the information. Uh, the report, draft report has been drafted and distributed, and I believe you all have a copy of that. Um, and I hope you've seen this in advance, so hopefully there's no surprises necess- necessarily. So, uh, on the outset of this, our goal was to understand the existing conditions of your DPW, um, and, um. Kind of give, come up with a plan for the future. Uh, what are your future needs, your, your programmatic needs, your. Um, uh, your equipment needs as well as, uh, the service delivery. How does the DBW and how should the DBW operate? Uh, in a, looking forward, you know, forty, fifty years down the line. Um, and trying to define what that really means in terms of your requirements for a, a facility that's really. A, a look forward facility, so, uh, co-locations synergies, uh, the durability of, of buildings. And when I say synergies, I mean synergies between different, um, service demands of the, of the department. And, um, a- a- and, and their divisions, and how they can help each other, as well as the overall community synergies. Uh, sustainability, um, opportunities, uh, where, where we might be able to take advantage of that. Um, the circulation, both inside the building as, as well as a campus of buildings that support its activities. Um, looking at site locations, trying to figure out, uh, what an appropriate location might be for, uh. This facility as well as the appropriate size and characteristics of that site. Um, and then finally to evaluate the, all the options, uh, and come up with a, uh, an estimated cost of. What something like this might, might be for a specific location. Uh, on the next slide, we talk a little bit about where we've been to date, and you saw some of this back in May, and we've been making some progress since. Um, our, we had done our existing conditions, um, review. And we're gonna go over that in a little bit more detail today than we did back in May. I give you a little bit more insight. Some of you have toured the facility, so. Um, the slides could be a little shocking, but to some of you, they won't be so shocking, that's a. Um, but it's, it's certainly, uh. Illustrates the need. Um, programming, we spent a lot of time going through with the departments and surveying, um, all the different divisions and stakeholders. To understand what the, uh, the inventory and the space requirements are, uh, for this facility in a go-forward basis. And, um, establish what the infrastructure requirements would be to support that, you know, electrical. You know, the, the power, the water, the, actually getting the, the street access, et cetera. So site assessments were done, which included a site solicitation to go out to the public and, and find what sites, uh, and properties might be. Uh, options or opportunities for the location of this campus. Um, to validate, um, the different, uh, multiple sites through a set of criteria that were established prior to. Uh, the sites coming in front of the, um, uh, in, in front of this group, the team. So that we had sort of an objective set of criterias to evaluate every site. Um, and then evaluating those potential sites. Integration of the design requirements into, um, an actual plan that was prototypical. Not on a site to show the synergies between the different divisions. Um, not just the three divisions, but all six groups or seven groups of, uh, that actually would use the facilities. Uh, and do a schematic facilities, uh, diagram, which you saw a draft of at our last, uh, last get together. Uh, and finally, um, after looking at the feasibility of the sites, uh, and, and ranking them. To try to take this design and put it on the most feasible site, um, and. And see how it would actually fit. How would this really work? And to put together a draft report for the city to consider and get public comment. So that's kind of all the ground cover we've, we've done and, and, uh, both before and since May. Next slide, please. So what we want to do is I have about nine slides here, um, and go through them very quickly to talk about some of the needs that we observed. Um, it's not a comprehensive slideshow, there's, there's a lot of material, uh, that we found. Um, and nine slides just won't do it, but I think this is kind of a quick overview that helps, um. At the existing site, um, at the Burnham Street Campus, we have, uh, three divisions segregated and not integrated. Over this small site, but they're in, they're in multiple separate buildings. Uh, one of the buildings is, is actually, um, or two of the buildings are really supporting two different divisions. Um, and it, it's all kind of mixed, um, which is really not a great. Um, a synergy to really work as a unit. Uh, that being separated physically. That being separated physically as well as, um, electronically makes an issue. Next slide, please. There's a significant amount of equipment that's stored without cover at the, at the existing, uh, campus. So, um, there's a, uh, a human investment and a cost associated with mobilizing and spending the time clearing off the equipment in order to, to then go perform the task, which is less time on task to deliver services to the city. The staging area is, is simply too small, um, and as is the parking, which really creates a congestion issue, which again speaks to time and efficiency. Next slide, please. The storage, um, and garage bays are, um, inefficient and very, very tight. And, um, unfortunately, the, the configuration in this rather vintage building lends itself to a certain amount of injury risk at the same time. There's just not the sufficient and appropriate segregation inside the buildings of the different functions that need to happen in order to give everybody enough space to, to, to work in a safe manner. Next slide, please. Oh, you have, um, storage base, which is, which is just simply too small. At the extreme, um, this has led to the necessity to store some materials on mezzanine levels or upper levels that, um, aren't really easily accessed. My favorite example is actually this image in the upper left-hand corner where we have very large tires being stored on the second floor of the building, um, with stair access. Makes it very difficult for your, your city employees to be able to safely access that, those tires and, and put them on the trucks in an efficient and safe manner. Next slide. Employee work areas, if, if we're planning for the future, we really should be planning for about thirty people. And you could just look at that twelve-foot, ten-foot table and know that it's not happening here. We, um, you can look at the lockers and just when you see everything on the floor, that's a good indicator that you don't have enough locker space just to provide the very basic functions. I mean, the injury risk that we talked about before translates into all sorts of overcrowding situations. Next slide, please. Employee work areas that are, um, not ADA compliant. There is a, a scale of compliance required for all public facilities. Um, and employee worker is get a little bit of a pass, but overall you do need to have ADA compliant facilities for, um, anybody who comes to the, comes to the campus. We're lacking that here. Next slide, please. Um, then there's a, a, a little bullet list of, of safety issues. Some of them are personal safety issues like, uh, anti-slip surfaces that are lacking. Then there's systems issues like smoke and fire alarms and sprinkler systems that really are needed in the building. The, we talked about work clearances earlier, um, but that kind of goes over into this slide as a safety issue. And then carbon monoxide, uh, management systems and alarm, alarms and so forth are just inadequate. We, we also have a, uh, another category, which is acoustics, which we thought was important enough to actually have in these highlight slides because the existing, um, campus is really deep in an urban area. Um, and then you've got some neighbors and by the nature of its function, it's a lot of noise that comes out of this campus that the neighbors have, um, endure. So, um, we think that's a, a significant need. Next slide, please. Going into our, uh, HVAC, electrical and plumbing, um, we talked about exhaust systems and carbon monoxide before, um, as well as the mechanical systems being undersized. You have enough electrical service to this building, um, into the campus, but the distribution is limited over the campus between the buildings and inside the building. So there's really not enough power going on here and there's not enough outlets, um, as well. We don't have any charging stations. So as you move forward with EV vehicles, um, you, you're going to be needing those. You have had some LED light replacements for fuel efficiency, uh, energy efficiency, but it's not a complete placement program yet and it really needs to be completed. Plumbing fixtures, there's simply not enough and we talked about accessibility earlier. Next slide, please. Um, and then there's just general building conditions, um, which, you know, you don't need fourteen slides for me to know that this is a serious issue. But just like, I just put some of the more graphic ones up there for you. There's just, there's a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of, a lot of things that really needed to be addressed over the years that have not. And so there's some significant deterioration in these buildings. They are vintage, was what we call it in the business, which require a lot of extra care. And certainly these buildings are, um, very much, uh, at the end of their useful life, uh, to, to coin a term. Next slide, please. So I wanted to just do a quick overview of user groups because there's a lot of material that's color-coded and it gets a little confusing. But essentially you have three divisions in your department. Streets, water and sewer. And then there is a user group, which is in the, um, in the purple at the top, which we call common spaces or fleet spaces. And these spaces are shared in use by all the divisions. So they get their own color. If you look on the floor plan, it's a lot of purple on that floor plan. Personally, I think that shows good synergy, but, then there's the emergency services, um, that we're trying to accommodate in, um, the upcoming campus, uh, which is appropriately in red. Um, and then inventory, it's all solid waste management in orange. There's also a fueling depot where we, we're trying to accommodate and we thought that was unique enough that it should just be mentioned here as a bullet. Next slide, please. So these are very similar documents to what you looked at back in May. On the right is the, um, the stock list or equipment lists, which the department, um, spent a tremendous amount of time, uh, examining not only what they have, but, you know, the inventory that they think they're going to need in the foreseeable future, so that we could plan around that specifically. In addition to that, on the left is the space requirements program where they went through every single space. And again, that follows the color coding that we talked about earlier, where we looked at every single space and give it a size. And all of this is in the, uh, draft report, uh, in the appendix. Next slide, please. So, um, we broke up these, um, equipment spaces requirements into categories by conditioning, essentially. So we have, um, the enclosed heated and semi-heated, uh, part of the buildings, uh, where, you know, you just, you need to have some level of, of climate control. Then there is the enclosed spaces that are not heated. So it's, it's just what it sounds like. It's got four walls and a door, but it doesn't have to have, uh, any conditioning. Then undercover spaces, um, and that's a little bit misleading. It's, it's a, it's a building or a space that has three sides, but basically no fourth side. So you can roll inventory in and out. It might be a little snow that gets in there, but for the most part, that equipment is covered. It doesn't need four walls and it does not even need an operable door. And finally, the outdoor spaces that don't have any cover at all, which are self-explanatory. Next slide, please. So the design integration of all these things together, um, as well as, um, integrating in the way the department wants to work as, as a unit. It really is, is how we came to this floor plan. This is essentially the same as what you saw back in May. So there's no surprises here in terms of a prototype layout. We did continue to, um, segregate the wash base, uh, on the left-hand side, which could be anywhere on the campus. Just to be able to segregate the cost as well as, um, make it a more flexible add-on later if, if costs required. This is an expandable building from right to left. And the main portion of the, uh, or the hub of the administration part of the building is in the upper right-hand corner. That would be also with the, the public would enter the building. This is a drive-through facility. So, um, you, you come through from the right and you go through, uh, out the left. So this, which is a little bit different than a drive-through where, um, basically each truck would have its own bay that it's allowed to drive through. This is, this is much more efficient, um, in terms of operations. Next slide, please. This is a, a campus design integration slide. So, uh, we were looking at the building itself. This is a area diagram of, um, the other categories of, uh, enclosed spaces that are not heated or semi-enclosed spaces or, or open spaces that are still needed for the campus, but don't necessarily have to be part of the main structure. So you, uh, just to give you an example, like the salt pile needs to be uncovered, doesn't it? But it doesn't need to have a fourth, a fourth wall. That's on this slide. A lot of other stuff. Next slide, please. So Brian, uh, from, from the wolf is going to walk us through, um, a lot of the hard work that was done for the site selection uh, and, and site evaluations. There's been a lot of progress, uh, since May and we're excited to show, talk to you about it.
Thanks, Brad. As previously mentioned, I'm Brian Lane Carnes from Dwarf Engineering. We're the civil engineer for the projects, working on the site selection and screening. So as Brad said earlier, the first step in the site selection process was to, define the required site elements that are needed to allow for the DPW campus development. Um, and so this site selection matrix, uh, was developed, uh, in comfort between Duolph and the DPW to, um, define those needed elements. So it's, it's generally a rubric with four sort of main categories. Program requirements that are necessary for the facility, uh, physical features of the site that's being evaluated or considered. Availability of utilities and, um, environmental or land use permit restrictions. And then below that, uh, as you can see, there's a number of criteria in each of the four categories. Each criterion was assigned a value of zero through five, uh, five being the most suitable. If any, uh, criteria received a score of zero, um, that was intended to indicate that the, uh, the, that criterion was not something that was reasonably able to be overcome on a particular site in order to, um, cite the DPW facility there. We also assigned a weighting factor of one through five each criterion, um, to indicate the relative importance of, of each factor in terms of, um, making the DPW campus development. So Duolph developed the initial draft of the site screening matrix. We gave it to DPW for review. They gave us some valuable comments, um, in the waiting area particularly. For instance, you know, looking at the sort of overall picture, the environmental restrictions were weighted more heavily than anything else. So we brought those back a little bit, um, put a little more emphasis on the facility requirements. We added, uh, these, uh, categories to evaluate whether the conceptual site plan fits well on the site. Those kind of things were, were very helpful. So, um, the result was the slight selection matrix, that we used to evaluate the various sites under consideration. Next slide, please. And so, um, coming out of the development of the site selection matrix, we came up with kind of a list of site requirements. The site has to be a certain size to fit the development. Turned out to be about six acres. We have to have turning movement for all the various vehicles to access both the building and the exterior storage areas. You know, segregation of elements that need to be separate, like the, um, solid waste management facility. Safe access to a public road is very important. Um, and then meeting various environmental standards. Um, and you'll see these things pop up as we go through the sites that were evaluated. Um, and then infrastructure, um, appropriate power, communication, sewer, water. And as I'm sure everyone is aware, um, flooding is an important consideration in the city of Barry. So we wanted to make sure that we, uh, were looking at a site that would always be able to access, be accessed and wouldn't be impacted or damaged, uh, in a flood. And one that didn't have, um, existing site contamination that then the city would have to remediate and deal with in order to, to rebuild the, uh, or to build the DPW facility. So that's just a summary of the, the main site criteria. The next slide, please. So, uh, there were four sites that went through the evaluation process. These were a result of a solicits, public solicitation that the city put forward to, um, try and identify available sites in the city. Um, and I know Bill wanted to say a few words about the process that DPW went through to get to these four sites, which were presented to the wolf for evaluation.
So DPW had looked across the city and considered, um, locations, particularly that the city owns and, and considered them as something to look at. So we had specifically looked at, um, property owned by the city on Vermont fourteen, north of Hope Cemetery. And the city actually owns some land that extends in Barrytown. So there's, there's, um, more than six acres there, but a portion of that is actually, um, incorporated into the Hope Cemetery plans. There is another site that we considered that, um, involved the north end of Merchant Street. Portions of the cow pasture and two private properties where we had sufficient room. But in fact, the, the cow pasture is a conservation area. And so trying to, to use it didn't seem appropriate. Although there were that, were that essential, there are some things that could be given back. For instance, parking and access for the cow pasture from Route fourteen, which it doesn't have now. But it was removed from consideration because, um, the early discussions with folks indicated there was significant opposition to that. We looked at the Farwell Street site, you know, where we have an existing pit and adjacent recreation area. It is a, um, a closed site. There, there was some solid waste disposal and an evaluation of that property. It was, uh, identified as being a limited, limited weight-bearing area until further investigation was done. And so, um, that fell out because it took away an existing recreation area as well as we still hope to be using the Farwell Street site as, as a, um, material storage and development area for the next roughly six to ten years minimum. So that, that there was, uh, one more that we looked at and that was, um, North Main Street and Berlin, that's property owned by, um, a corporation called Nella, um, was associated with Allen Lumber. But includes the Tenko Building and some properties associated with it. And the issue there was flooding. Essentially, the portions of the, of the property itself are, um, at the hundred-year flood elevation. It can be flood-proof, but we couldn't gain access to it during the hundred-year event. The street is under, underwater at that point. So, so we, we started looking broadly. We eliminated four sites. The first, first choices were what is the city on use? Took us to that public solicitation. The solicitor made input from landowners in Barry City for three weeks. We didn't get a lot of response from that. We ended up with, um, one site that was offered, uh, with pricing and no more than that. So that, that takes us to where Brian is just going to walk us through the next best sites that we could find at that point. And, um, I think we're probably ready to hear that site-specific scoring.
So coming out of the internal DPW review process, oh, can we back up to the back, the last slide again for a second? So I just kind of wanted to orient everybody to where the, the sites are, trying not to blind anyone. Oh, cool. That does not show up on the TV at all. Okay. So much for that. Maybe I'll do a little stand-in point. So, uh, here's three oh two coming through town, sixty-three coming down, fourteen north, fourteen south. So the four sites include the existing DPW site on Burnham Street, which is kind of off the back door here. Out here on Route three oh two towards Montpelier, um, there's an undeveloped site just past the treatment plant, which is there. And then, um, two sites on the south end of town at Allen Street. So one on the west side of Allen Street and one on the east side of Allen Street. So those, those are just the general locations where all those four sites are just so we can be oriented. Next slide, please. So to just sort of give a quick summary before we get into the sites and, and if you read the report, you already know this. Three out of the four sites that were evaluated were deemed to not be reasonably developable for the DPW site. So, uh, that would be the, the treatment plant site, the existing Burnham Street site and the site on the west side of Allen Street. So I'm just going to go through really quickly. Each one has a kind of really obvious thing that makes it unsuitable. So I'm just going to go through those three really quickly.
Obvious to us now.
Yes, obvious to us now. Yes, exactly. Yes, obvious to us now. Yes, exactly. What did you mean? In the result of the evaluation, it became obvious. Yes, thank you. So the the treatment plant that we call the treatment plant drive site, obviously the one that's just past the treatment plant. The so the the treatment plants over here. So you might think that we could just extend the road and get into the site from over here. But this little portion right here is not only part of the sixty two right way. So there's no connection without going over the right of way. This is also extremely steeply sloping all the way from sixty two down to the river. So it's just not feasible to come in from this direction. Which leaves the only access being from Route three oh two to build a bridge over the Stevens branch to access the site. As you can see, the floodway and then the flood plain are quite wide here. And in order to provide safe and and you know, access at all times to the site. You know, we'd have to build a bridge that spans over the flooded area. It's and we estimated it was a two hundred foot span, seven to ten million dollar bridge. And adding that expense to this project just was deemed not to be feasible. Next slide, please. Then there's the existing Burnham Street site. So when we developed the conceptual conceptual site plan, we need six acres at minimum to accommodate the building, the circulation and all the different outbuildings and storage areas. The existing Burnham Street site is three point two acres. So it's just barely over half of what's needed to accommodate the DPW facility. So and also this isn't shown on this slide, but there are significant flood plain issues at this site as well. Not only on the site, but in the access to the site. So that is why this was not reasonably developable for the DPW facility. And then next slide, please. And then the Allen Street West site, unfortunately, it's not super clear on this slide, but when we went out and walked that site, it was immediately apparent that it was pretty wet out there. So we had a wetland delineation performed on the site and seventeen out of the twenty acres on the property are state protected wetlands. We had a meeting out there with one of the state wetlands biologists and basically the state's position is that it wouldn't be possible to permit enough wetland impact on this site to be able to accommodate the DPW facility. So this is also not reasonably feasible for the facility. So that brings us to next slide, please. Thank you. The Allen Street East site. So this is the one out of the four that we do think is reasonable to develop for the DPW facility. However, this site still has some significant challenges that would need to be overcome to site a facility of this size and scope on this property. The first of which is that there's significant elevation change as you go across the property from north to south. And on many of the ridge lines, it's a little hard to see, but there's there's sort of a ridge line in here. There's a ridge line in here up there and then it drops off steeply down to the school. And along all of these ridge lines, I'm sorry, that's that's a depression. That's a ridge line. That's a ridge line. But along these ridge lines, there's ledge rock visible at the surface. So we know that at least in some areas, it's very shallow to ledge on this site. And so we were targeting the sort of open meadow on the southeast side as the most developable area. But that area also beyond what I've already mentioned, there were also some wetlands identified in that area. And as well, it's a little hard to see on there, but there's transmission lines that run this way and that way along the site. Which further sort of impinges on this developable area. Next slide, please. But despite the challenges, it would be possible, at least conceptually, to build a DPW facility here. To deal with the elevation change, you'd need to lower the south end of the site about thirty one feet and raise the north end of the site about thirty one feet. Which is a lot, but not infeasible. You'd likely encounter ledge that would need to be blasted when you're doing those kinds of cuts and fills. We did do some review of the wetland permitting and we think it'd be feasible to get a permit to disturb the wetlands to build a site. However, it's likely that the city would end up paying impact fees under the federal wetland permitting. So that would be an additional cost. And then we would have to relocate the transmission lines, which thank you, isn't as big of a deal as you would think because they're their standard poles, even their transmission lines are not like the big triangular metal ones that you might be picturing. And there's sufficient room on the site to relocate them, but that would have to be negotiated with Green Mountain Power. And again, that would be an additional cost to the city if this site was used to be developed. So again, while we think it is would be reasonably able to be developed, there are certainly significant challenges to this site as well.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go for it.
When when you're talking about the fees, the wetland fee and moving out of the telephone poles, et cetera, the electricity poles. Are we talking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands or over a million dollars?
We don't have estimates for those costs yet. Rough estimate on the wetland impact fee that our wetlands consultant gave us. And and again, this is with no talking to anyone and is very preliminary. Seventy five thousand dollars for the impact fee of the wetlands. I really wouldn't want to give you a figure on relocating those poles. That would really be something that, you know, you'd have to talk to GMP because it they would determine the cost and then tell you how much it is. And then, you know, that would certainly be something that if this site was explored further, that would be one of the first steps along with geotechnical explorations to try and determine the where the ledge is and how much ledge might need to be blasted and and all of that. So.
Excuse me. But would it be better if we're using the Hope Cemetery site? Is the problem that Hope Cemetery wants to expand that way and there's not enough land?
So so about three acres of the area available is area that was designed for Hope Cemetery. There's another about two point seven acres in the city. And the the city owns another one point five acres in the town of Barrett, including a small, a mobile home. So that this there's enough land area there, but it would compromise some of the Hope Cemetery plants. So it's it's didn't make it into this, but certainly could be reviewed.
And the cow pasture, would it take a big chunk or a little chunk?
So so the the cow pasture, there was I think it's about three quarters of an acre to an acre right at the intersection of Vermont fourteen Merchant Street.
Okay.
Most of the the campus would actually be on some of the private, the last two private properties and we haven't assessed whether those were available or whether they could come there.
Sorry, the last two private properties on Merchant Street?
Yes. So so as you move up fourteen, it gets very but a lower area, again, there's some with some differential elevation on the site.
Where the existing road is?
So it's a portion of it is now it's so essentially it's to the east or northeast side of Merchant Street. As you as you go further north on fourteen, it's very steep. It's probably one on one in the area behind the the Hope Cemetery support.
So that's kind of the summary of the the site evaluation process so far. So I'll hand it back to Brad and Bill.
So so one of the things that we wanted to revisit was what the purpose of this project was. And so when we when we actually defined the scope, the mindset was that we would look at two levels of a potential design. One would be, I'm going to characterize it as a traditional public works or public building type of building. So it's something that's built with a fifty to seventy five year life. Typically block, block and brick. So it's it's not something that would need to be refurbished. This this lower level was what we we called the the economy level. And that was we'd build something that could be refurbished and make it to fifty years. And and so metal buildings in a DPW environment, because we we have so many corrosives, principally salt, that's on the equipment and and actively in the environment, we know that the building would have to be reskinned in order to make it to fifty years. But the the cost, as we looked at this project, is so great, we really arrived at, there's only one level. And that level is trying to do an economical design. But not not forego the operational requirements. So we would expect to have to replace some siding on this building. The frame itself would certainly make the fifty to seventy five year timeframe, but we build a building, we expected to do some refurbishment on in order to make a fifty to seventy five year life. Scope that's smaller than that regard.
Any additional questions?
So so next slide. So in conclusion, we've identified that the size and the campus configuration that the the department feels that they need and it has exhibited to be for in the foreseeable future. We we have a site, we have one site that's feasible, but we we don't consider it ideal. So we we don't like our choices. That's really kind of the the very basics of it. And we really need more sites to consider. The existing Burnham Street site is is campus is really is clearly not sufficiently sized and located appropriately for the campus going forward to really service the community properly. That just the size and the flood risk. And finally, Bill talked about the building configuration. I mean, clearly because of the size and demand that the that the department needs place upon this facility. Having a building that's a forty year superstructure with a shorter life on its components just makes sense. So that's kind of the direction that we've been directed to to consider as we step into a a cost evaluation of this facility. Excuse me. And finally, state and federal funding grants certainly will be needed beyond city funding for this project. Sorry, I didn't bring my water. As far as next steps are concerned, after consultation with the entire team and of course with Bill's guidance, it is felt that a second round of site solicitation is only appropriate at this juncture to get more choices on on sites. We're also looking at the site pre-selection process and analysis, doing a city overview, basically taking a fresher look in a different way. And what's available, something beyond just doing general site solicitations and and requests for proposals. You look like you want to say something there.
I think another another element of this is that we've looked extensively within the city. And there there may be opportunities that are outside of the city. And and prior to doing that, we need to do some some level of cost evaluation. Because if those turn out to be a better option, we should be pursuing them. One of the difficulties for us is it comes with, I'm going to characterize it as a fairly significant political liability. And that is paying tax to another community. And so we haven't looked at what ways that could be addressed because we we basically need to come back and say, is Barry City willing to make those payments? Or should we be negotiating with another community to see if there's some agreement that could be struck that might reduce that? But you know, we're we're looking at a number that would be on the tall side of a hundred thousand dollars a year for that kind of tax. That's that's on the low end, likely to be higher based on the kind of early back of the nap and views of what this could cost. So recognize cost is a huge issue for us. And what we've done is to try to lay out. Talked about programming. Program programming is a way to define what it is you do and what's required to deliver that. And so it it really had those two elements. What do we own for equipment? And what physical area do we need to actually do work? And so some things that we we do now, we need to discontinue because they they aren't likely to comply with any future regulations. So we we do metalwork in an open area of the shop rather than an area with ventilation. So we we've just, we tried to build this from the ground up. What is it that's required to do the job? And what does that translate into for a facility? This report actually does a good job of bringing us to an understanding of that. When we when we looked at some of the pictures that demonstrated need tonight, one of the things that we wanted to show you is areas of need. So our current facility does not address staff notes well. And any building that we develop or any building we acquire has to address those better than it is. We have twenty three people now and I have a picnic table that seats eight. If the guys are shoulder to shoulder. And and we really don't want our employees eating in the shop where we're grinding metals or working on vehicles and and the environment isn't suitable. So those are all pieces that we've worked hard to try to bring to you and to the public. So this big ass isn't something that's added or intended to be a Taj Mahal. It's intended to to meet our needs. Happy to answer questions if if you have.
I was wondering if any of the FEMA flood mitigation grants that are out there now would make it more possible to develop around the Tenko area building. I mean, I know that someone has the building and they're using it, but theoretically, if we could get one of those grants, would it make that area usable or not really?
So so I again, I think the site itself has the potential to be developed, but the problem is access. And and so North Main Street in its present configuration and elevation floods and and we really don't want to place our DPW in that. And to raise that area above the flood level, we would end up having to start somewhere beyond Seminary Street. And and ideally, we would go past our fifth street access for the public safety building. So it's it's making the property developable as possible, but making it accessible during the flood becomes very difficult and expensive.
Thank you.
Counselor Deering.
Is there any possibility that you could separate the design to two separate buildings to have two separate sites that are smaller? Because I know that we're kind of working on a size issue with the site selection. So I'm not sure if there's any way that we might be able to separate the two or make some type of separation where we could fit two different buildings to accommodate all the needs that we have.
So so we we did actually consider that and and one of the things that that really requires is breaking one of the premises that we started with, which is we have a unified DPW. And so if if we break DPW into into different units, which is possible, you could do that. But then we're going to duplicate some of those same citing costs in both locations. So at this point, we haven't been able to define a way that that clearly saves us. It isn't impossible to to go back and look at that, but it's changing the premise. And and so one of the reasons that that premise is so important is because with a water department of four people, with a sewer department of three people, neither department can address all of its duties alone.
Right.
And so we have to borrow from division to division. And so we have to borrow from division to division. It's difficult enough when you're on the same site, but in different buildings. So when they convene and organize, they're in different areas. Right now, we we're working on trying to fill the weekly schedule basis so that we can say. Okay, Tuesday, we're bringing four people from streets into water. We're doing a hydrant and some meter installs. And and right now. It works, but it is isn't as effective as being in one place with common planning tools. And the the premise, I think, is a good one to hold, but at some point. If we can't do it, then we have to revisit that premise.
And from a site perspective, there's a lot of efficiency just in the circulation area. You saw on the. Kind of a ring of circulation around the building. So when you go to two buildings, it's not like you have that. You have to sort of bring that circulation. Both. So I think if you were going to look at two sites, you'd be looking at two four-acre sites instead of one six-acre site. Just because of the site inefficiencies of trying to develop two different. Have appropriate access and circulation and grading and strong water and all of those things that go along with developing a site.
Yeah, I was just throwing a concept that. Well, you know, and it's something, it's something we've talked about before this meeting and and kicked it around and. So because we've considered, I I can kind of chime in here, it's it's also probably not a fifty-fifty split, right? So if you start to split up the divisions, it's more likely that you're going to end up still having. Instead of two four-acre sites, probably one of those sites would have to be. Larger than that to be able to accommodate. The appropriate division that would end up being on it, right? I mean, just a lot of shared equipment and program. And so to take that shared program and then split that up between two sites. You can imagine what that does to the efficiencies as well. And I'm an architect, not a DPW guy, but. Having sat with Bill for these many months and and gone through the intricacies, you could you could kind of see how that would occur.
Sorry, do you have any more slides or are you looking for?
It's just one more slide that I I had gotten most of the way through. It it just talks a little bit about the next steps and and we've talked about most of it. We just have the last couple of bullets here. Which essentially is, you know. After doing more site assessment and solicitation and considering more sites. We hope to have the appropriate site to do a cost estimate on instead of. A site that really isn't isn't ideal. So. The cost estimate kind of follows along with some of the sustainability issues that you guys have brought up at your last meeting. We've done a lot of work. Defining what the building could possibly be. And we can do a little bit more of coloring in those lines. So that the cost estimator is is that much more informed when we do bring him on onboard at the right time. And certainly having the right site for him to look at is is going to make a big difference. We certainly don't want to have him doing a building and then a site because that's that's a very incomplete picture. And then, of course, the final report, we're hoping to have something in January.
So then, just some initial reactions, then. You know, I think I I don't want to dismiss the idea of going outside of the city limits. I'd love to discuss annexing. Could chunk of one of our neighbors to make it fit within the city limits. I don't want to dismiss it because I know that we're a city of four square miles and eventually we're going to get into the conversation of if we want to build something. In the city, then something else is going to have to be knocked down or significantly redeveloped. But talking. You have a great city manager and I'm sure that there would be a great negotiation that would happen and get us the best deal possible. But when we're talking about committing at least probably more than a hundred thousand dollars annually. From money from from our municipality transferring that to something else, when I'm trying to do the math to figure out, let's call it two hundred thousand a year. For our tax bill, how many years are we going to get until we just should have built that bridge down at the end of three oh two for seven million, ten million dollars, right? And it's been a hundred years. So it's a long time and we're talking about a forty-year structure. Again, these are just my initial thoughts and my initial reactions. And that's why I don't want to dismiss it. But I'm also thinking, forget the financial side of it for a second, just the idea of having the HQ of one of the. Core departments of the city, not within the city. You know this better than I do. That's going to affect response times. That's going, you know, we could never get away with moving the fire. Department of the Police Department outside of the city limits. And I'm extremely hesitant to do that with DPW too. And then on. Going up for more site solicitations, Bill, you know, Nicholas, I personally, not speaking for the council, but myself. You know, if we need to put maybe a grand or two behind this in advertising money, so we can run in the Times Argus maybe daily, maybe we can do some. The From Porch Forum sponsored post to. Grounding municipalities. The point being is if you want a couple of dollars to really get this advertising going and push this out to a bigger audience. I personally would advocate for us spending that chunk of change. But other than that, you know, I one thing I really appreciate about this presentation is you're not telling us that you have to take that one site. That's potentially workable. I was afraid of coming in here and being told like, all right. That's it. Have the motion. Let's go. And I appreciate the fact that that's not where we are at the end of this. So thank you for that and for a very thorough process so far.
Carol, what is our bonding capacity?
Um, I I can't answer that with a.
I've never had to ask that. But this looks to me, this looks like a thirty million dollar project.
Probably in two thousand twenty construction costs, but. You know, and I mean, I'm just looking at eighty-four thousand square feet, three hundred bucks a foot. You know, listening to the site challenges, you know, thirty-one foot differential.
Well, we and we touched a little bit upon this back back in May. And you know, just looking at the building. We felt that, you know, big, big picture. Order of magnitude, as it were, that we are north of thirty million dollars for the construction, not the site costs. But for the for the buildings for this.
I mean, I was being, I mean, right now. Our pro forma is four fifty, the square foot, right? I mean, we don't. You know, we're not building cold storage warehouses, which are going to be less, but.
Yeah, the the that I think we would be a little bit less only because of, as you say, the nature of these buildings are a little bit different. Than say a school or or right. But at the same time, we figure you're in that neighborhood of of north of the thirty million at this point without having. The full estimate done, it's if I I wouldn't venture to give you more specificity than that, but you're right, you're in the right. Ballpark, so we think.
And bonding capacity is going to be, I mean, I can certainly reach out to the to the bond bank and ask. But it's also going to be, what's going to come into play is the fact that this is got. At least three different funding sources, because it's enterprise water and it's enterprise sewer and it's general fund and probably capital funded. So and each one of those has separate potential capacities. So it's it's more than just one. One source.
But it could, it could potentially put, I mean, I'm thinking of Burlington having their high school discussion around a hundred and sixty million dollar. High school Burlington is seven times bigger than we are. And I'm so this could potentially a thirty-plus million dollar project could. I mean, I I'm not arguing with your work. You've done some really good work here and I can't argue with the need, but. You know, as we start, when anyone starts a project, the first question that someone asks you is, well, what can you afford to spend? And and they just want a rough idea. They don't want. And and I'm just not certain, you know, looking at this design and and reflecting on a thirty-plus million dollar price tag, I'm not. I I I I know we can't afford that. I mean, the operational costs, even though those buildings are tremendously energy efficient. They're also much smaller in terms of square footage. So even the operation costs would likely. Push your budget up quarter million dollars and that's just operating costs. That's not. You got to pay for it. So, you know, when you were in the last time, I I kind of had these same comments and I'm just wondering whether. We should really be looking seriously at some sort of phased approach as as opposed to. You know, and again, I, you know, I don't like to be the guy who sits there here and grabs all over your work, but. But I don't want you to put even more work into something that we look at ultimately and say, we're not even close to being able to afford this. Sorry.
No, I I I share some of those concerns. So I can tell you that in my mind, the question of. Beyond political will in the sense of what's an appropriate limit for the bonding capacity in the city. And deciding between a DPW building and a state mandated waste waste water treatment upgrade or. A dam repair. And and so when I look at what we face, I recognize that. Truly, we have a huge amount of need. The question that that keeps coming back to me is, how do you address that need? And in some cases, as you said, you face it, you don't accomplish all of what you need to do. And you postpone some part of it. What I haven't been able to define in my mind is how I avoid making. The operations perform more poorly. By virtue of splitting them and phasing than they do now. And and so we are so short on staff. That if we don't do something to optimize how they interact. The answer is I'm going to have to decrease the operating cost by adding staff. So if I phase and split, I can't have four people in the water department. It's got to be six. Because once I put them separately, and and again, the the site, for instance, we're on three point two acres. Right now, we make over a hundred and fifty trips a year to Farwell Street, hauling frozen sand. Up to Farwell Street in the winter time, hauling that sand after it thaws back to to. Burn Street and all those things, they're they're small. I mean, two hundred trips is, you know, three hundred hours, it's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. Including the wear on trucks, but it's still that money. And and so. Truly, I I don't have any answer. I I think your concern is well placed. And and I think it's one that. This process will try to wrestle with as we go forward. I don't have an answer for it.
I I guess I'll pipe in a little bit. It it obviously put a phenomenal amount of work into this and thought in terms of what the needs are and. How do you accommodate them? And. And there's no question that you have to have something. You cannot, we can't keep going like this. So. In a way, doing just what you said, keep moving forward. Being aware of what the constraints possibly could be and how do you make changes and maybe accommodate what you were saying about. Phasing it. But I don't see how we can stand in the way, because I think, not I think, I know we really need this. And we need it in some way pretty quickly.
Carol, would it be a hard exercise to come up with our bonding capacity roughly, not? You know, again, if, you know, we're sitting here talking about a thirty-plus million dollar project, and if we learn our bonding capacity is twenty-five. Then we've got some real conversation to have because there's there's no way. That I would ever sit here and exhaust the city's bonding capacity that. You just couldn't do that because then if an emergency dam repair did come up.
So I would understand if our capacity was sixty thousand, you said, no.
Right, but but I want to make sure we know. You know, if the answer is, hey, it's twenty-two, I I think it's higher than that. I think our bonding capacity is probably north of thirty, but I don't know that. And I've never had to ask this question before, but I'd I'd be interested in knowing what it is so. That if Carol came back and said, well, it's forty million, I'm not saying I'd support a thirty million dollar project, but at least. Our bonding capacity would support a thirty million dollar project. And I realize there may be other grants, there may be under other funding sources. I understand that we may not. You know, there may be partnering opportunities. We're not the only, you know, there are some repair. Facilities or some repair areas within the Public Works Garage that are not unique to the city of Berry. City of Montpelier uses them, city of a town of Berry uses them, town of Berlin uses them. You know, we've talked about regionalization of things before and. You know, so there there could even be some opportunities to have conversations with other municipalities who have similar needs as we do.
Counselor Rozak.
Just so I understand, like, you can get us a snapshot of the bonding capacity we have right now. But that fluctuates over time as the bonds get paid down, et cetera, et cetera. So just because we've been. Using ten million. It would certainly. Million is different than using ten million out of thirty-two million two years from now, et cetera.
Yeah, it it'll give us a snapshot in time. The other question that I want an answer to is. I know that there are circumstances under which municipal facilities in other towns are tax exempt. So I certainly would want to explore that.
And just the last thing I'll add to is just acknowledging, you know, that you folks put in this presentation that. Whether we take off a acre or two or even add an acre or two, that this is going to require funding beyond just the city's capability. I just want to acknowledge that. You guys were also upfront about that.
So we did actually with USA USDA Rural Development Agency. And and so there are grant funds available now that can help us with design functions. They also said that from their predictions, it's entirely possible that this could be something that was. Potentially funded out of some type of economic incentive. Partially funded, not fully, but there there are, you know, some opportunities out there. And I think one of the things about this is that we need to get to the point where we have. A sound estimated cost, because that's going to be required by any granting agency. And so we need to move from this preliminary phase, knowing what we need, how we would put it together, where we might place it to. This is what it would cost on this location. And and for example, when when we did our site search. One of the things we didn't do is look at prime development land in large chunks of forty acre area that's available. But because we need six acres of it. You know, and maybe those things could be considered, especially as we look at site development costs. As much as I love the federal government, a seventy-five thousand dollar one-time payment. To cite our public works is probably not high on my list of ways to invest my money. And so finding a site and paying more for it becomes viable. As we start looking at refining site development costs. And I don't have that information for you, but that's further down this this process.
If I if I just may, I think, for some Brad, Brian and Bill, thank you. And I I think I might be a little redundant, but I think I want to repeat what I think I've heard from some counselors and make sure that. It's sort of the 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 will of the council, so to speak, but. You know, my my sense, as I've learned about this project is, you know, there's not a flat piece of six acre land in the city. It's a four square mile city. If that land existed, I think one of us would know about it. So I think I've heard Counselor Wazak, Counselor Lowzner, at least, and maybe others, that we should be creative and maybe look outside our borders, understanding that. There's maybe some tax implications. Carol, you said maybe we could work around that, but. I just want to make sure as we get into this next step, that I think I've heard it from some of you. I just want to make sure that, you know, we should be more creative, looking outside our borders and. Thinking outside the box because my sense is that we're not going to find the perfect tract of land. In in our city. So I just want to get a sense that that's that's where we should be going in our next step because that's we will be back in January. And I think if we start heading that way and it's not. Going to be palatable that it would be good to to know.
Yes. And while I don't have a vote, I have a voice. And I I think outside the the city limits, we are only four square miles. And I think about the distance between where Berry Town has their. DPW garage and the outer edges of their community and how far their vehicles and people have to travel. And if we were somewhere, you know, out Washington Street, up Prospect Street, you know, within. And if we were somewhere, you know, out Washington Street, up Prospect Street, you know, within spitting distance of the city, we'd be, we'd still be a lot closer than Berry Town is to their farthest reaches. And I think that if, if those are options, it's worth looking into.
All right. Anything else? Well, thank you very. Well, thank you very much. All right, moving on to upcoming business. Got nothing written down here. And unless you have.
So I'll just say that our next meeting will be scheduled for the 13th. So we'll, we'll be off next weekend. We'll be back 13th with full agenda.
All right. With that, I would go to roundtable. So Counselor Lozak.
Had a wonderful event last week. Karen and I hosted Peter Welch, who is a good friend. Fine Senator for the state of Vermont. Those of you who made it, I hope you had, I know you had a good time because of beer and wine were free, but as always, the food, you know, we had a great crowd. I think people were surprised how diverse it was. And that's exactly how it should be. And Counselor Booton, I'm sorry. There was a advertisement in the paper today that was just unfair. To characterize you unfairly in which you don't deserve to be cast. You know, you're a big teddy bear. I can, I can take it. I used to get death threats. No, but it wasn't, it wasn't fair. And more and more, i- if I ever do it, call me out. Because we have got to work together. You know, this economy is tough. And let me tell you, it's going to get a lot tougher. And the need is going to get a lot greater. And I'm, you know, people who can't be respectful, can't treat others with dignity, pretty much, I'm going to be just, I'm going to be silent. I'm going to do what I do when Karen and I fight, which is very, very rare. I leave. Because I don't want to say something that I might regret. So I just disengage and think about what I need to say, and then I say, so I, you know, again, I'm sorry. It wasn't fair. It wasn't right.
Assuming that is what was being posted all over Facebook. Is that correct?
2% of everything on Facebook. And with that, I'm done.
Counselor Stockwell?
Kind of what he said. I'm really interested in us remaining civil and able to talk through our differences because we have important differences that we need to be able to discuss civilly.
Counselor Wazak.
I agree with everything Counselor Lozak just said. Counselor Booton and I had a great conversation. I think it was Sunday evening about similar topics and just noting that Counselor Booton was not the only member of this council who's been unfairly characterized.
Counselor Dearing.
So I just wanted to give you all a fresh invitation to Spalding's home football game on Saturday. It is our home opener.
Under the lights.
Under the lights at seven o'clock. I'll be on the sideline helping coach and out. But there are some spots available for people if they wanted to help out with the chain gang. Just a little plug. It does pay 35 bucks a game. So it does put a little bit of money into somebody's pocket. But it's also the closest seat you can possibly get on a football field. So with that, I encourage everybody to come out and enjoy our community, support these young men who've worked really, really hard. And really just come out and support people at seven o'clock at Spalding.
Counselor Shambel?
I'll pass.
Look, I'm the last person here. I'll just say that I don't give a crap about the peanut gallery. With all due respect. You know, I, I read that on Facebook and I was a little annoyed and yet kind of laughed at it because I'm not running for state rep. And I don't understand. And I sure would not lose as a city counselor. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting to an end and hope everyone.
Actually, I would like a very brief executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Absolutely.
If you wouldn't mind. And I would make the motion for finding.
All right, a second.
Second.
The manager, I'd like the manager and the clerk as well. Sorry.
Okay. So for findings, we've got a first, a second, a, a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to go into executive session noting that I'd like the manager and clerk to attend. I do not expect any action.
And that's for contracts or negotiate legal. Okay. All right. And we've got a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will go into executive session and, or motion passes will go into executive session and three. Motion will go into executive session and, or motion passes will go into executive session and three. Motion will go into executive session and, or motion passes will go into executive session and three.